Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is five thirty P. M. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council meeting. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We're convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room, which is closed to the public. At the end of executive session, I will come back out and announce our work session, at which time the public is invited to join us. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. The we adjourn from executive session at six twenty-six. The time is now six twenty-seven, and we're gonna open into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Well, actually, we don't have a quorum until Bijou gets back.
Yeah.
He went out to his car. He'll be back in a short. We're not talking any business.
I just found this kid's card, so.
You don't want?
Yes, yes.
He just he just said to tell you hi. That was months ago.
Tell him hi.
It's Valentine's Day.
Okay.
Well, he knew enough about you and everything else.
This was established very early. Plus, our interest rate too, so I go hard on that.
He may be a different grade with you.
All right, everybody. Um, the time is six thirty. We're gonna we're in work session. Um, Mark had to leave for a family emergency, so.
Uh-oh.
Um, yeah, um, anyway, he, uh.
He'll keep it in form.
Apologized.
Right, and he'll keep it in form.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we only have two items on work session night. First one is a discussion regarding the agenda. We actually only have the consent agenda, so, um, unless you don't wanna talk about Mark, uh, Mike talking about city manager's reports. So consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or comments? Any desire to pull anything?
I had some questions about the wagon wheel fence.
All right, that is item D, I believe.
I didn't set him up for that, so you know.
Yes, you did.
There's a story behind all that.
Oh, okay, okay. No, I'm a I'm a pain in the rump as on my own.
No, no. It's just funny.
And then I had some questions about the residential rehab program.
Well, let's start with item D, since we're moving that direction right now. But, any questions?
All right. Okay, so, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay. Um, I mean, I'm I'm fine with the idea and the concept all like that, but, um, when we were looking at the dog park, one of the problems that and that some of the people using the dog park were complaining about was that there was no buffer between the fence and the grass, such that some of the mowing equipment would take out some of the fence or cause damage to it over time and all like that. Do we have a buffer like that with respect to this fencing? And and how far beyond, like, the outer boundary of the soccer field is the fence gonna be? I mean, do we have, like, a rendering or a drawing or anything to show how it can be laid out?
I could get that to you. So the concrete piers that will be poured are gonna be poured up to above the ground, and so mowing and reeding equipment will not hit the actual fence. Uh, as far as the distance from the edge of the fence to the rest of the property, there's gonna be enough room to run about a mower's width, about fifty-six inches, uh, between the edge of the fence and the property boundary, because there's two fences, and there's one on Creekview, um, that runs on the south side. So there'll be plenty of room outside of the fence to get mowing equipment in there.
Okay, and and what about, like, from the the out-of-bounds line? Or I don't know. My daughters haven't played soccer in so long, I forget what it's called.
So the fence is in the.
Throw me a bone, Bijou. So the the boundary line of the field.
So it's a practice field, so we don't paint, uh, uh, lines for the soccer field? The coaches can move the codes around. So this the fence that'll be installed will be at the far perimeter of the facility.
Okay, so there's no formal field.
So we'll be inside there, will be plenty of room for all the soccer teams to practice on.
Okay, and we do we do have a rendering we can look at, or no?
I can get that, too.
Okay. Okay.
Just as a perimeter, I don't have a rendering of the fence. The fence is gonna match, uh, in comparison to what's at the interactive fountain. It's the style and the functionality.
All right, well, okay, no, it sounds like I I think I'm fine with with what you said. That that sounds fine.
You had another one?
Oh, the the residential development issue?
Residential rehab.
Yes.
That's what you said. I'll be quiet. You you run the meeting.
That's the item B.
Yes, for the work session.
For the work session.
Yes.
That would be Mr. Steer. Mindy.
Arndi.
Arndy?
Arndy.
Just to be clear, I'm content keeping that on the consent agenda.
Okay.
On the fence.
You're not on the fence?
I'm not on the fence.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, man. It's hilarious. I'm really bad.
That was actually really good. And I was just disappointed I didn't think of it.
Okay, your question was on the fifty-four percent versus thirty percent, thirty-five percent? Jim?
What, mine?
Yeah.
No, um. Yeah.
Item B?
Yeah.
She hadn't presented it.
It's consent. Oh, I'm sorry.
What?
You're talking about I thought about item B on work session.
Yeah, I was, too.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
Our wheels are wobbling.
Okay, let's be clear. We're on we're still on consent on discussion of the agenda items.
Yes.
Okay.
My discussion of the agenda items has concluded.
Okay. I thought you you said B, so I thought you wanted seven B.
No, sir, no, sir, just three B.
Okay.
The residential rehab program.
All right. Any other any other discussion on agenda items? All right, we're on to B, uh, discussion regarding re rehabilitation items. That's why I was calling Matt, because Matt's name was under on the consent.
But I should've, I'm sorry.
This one is Mindy.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Mike, you can come back to the table. I mean, it's it's okay.
No, I know, but I don't I don't like that in my bag.
You can sit over there.
I'm fine.
You didn't like my voice.
You can sit here.
Oh, it's okay. I'm good.
Well, it's.
She's doing the presentation, y'all.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You have a.
Okay, perfect. I'm here this evening to discuss with you a residential rehabilitation grant program that the Ford Task Force has been working on. So tonight, I'm just presenting the proposed details and guidelines for you. Um, if you're in favor of the proposed program and all of its elements, we will move forward with advertising the program in late March or early May or early April, so that we can start accepting applications. So before I get too much further, um, I I thought we were gonna have a big crowd of the Ford Task Force, but we've got Peggy Quinn, so I wanna acknowledge Peggy Quinn and tell her, uh, thank you for being here tonight, and I'll overwork on this, so. Okay, I wanna start by mentioning the main purpose for doing this program. Um, as you all are all are very aware, um, the community created a pillar in the Vision Two Thousand and Forty Plan to address the future-oriented approach to residential development in Capel for both future needs, but also to protect the charm and character that exist in Capel neighborhoods today. Um, there were four main goals identified under this pillar, but tonight, we're focusing specifically on goal number two, which is to explore the refit and refurbishment of the older housing stock in Capel. Um, the goal specifically says, "Some neighborhoods that were established early in Capel's shift to suburban development are now due for refurbishment. There is some desire to see the character of these neighborhoods retained. The city might consider providing incentives to encourage refurbishment and implementing some protection of important architectural examples." So again, the city wants to encourage reinvestment into the existing homes in Capel in order to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. And so Capel is a community of choice, and we want it to stay that way. So what we do, so we wanna help protect the greatest investment that most of our residents will ever have, which is their home. The Ford Task Force specifically stated that the program was designed to encourage homeowners to restore and renovate their older homes, which will maintain or enhance Capel's neighborhood charm, architectural, and aesthetic value. The map on the screen is color-coded to show you the year that homes were built in Capel. So everything in light green and light blue shows, um, homes that were built prior to nineteen ninety-four. So approximately sixty-three point three percent of the homes in Capel were built thirty years or more ago. Um, due to the age of a large portion of the homes in Capel, the community realized that many of the homes might be in need of some renovations and updates, so that's why the Ford Task Force started working on this residential rehabilitation program. This program is designed to incentivize exterior home improvements in order to enhance the street appeal of the structure and property. Improvements made to the exterior of the entire site can be included for reimbursement, but the site will not qualify if the project plan does not include improvements that are visible to the public from the public right-of-way or alley. To qualify, the property must be thirty years or older. The program is open for both owner-occupied and rental properties, but the property owner is the one that has to apply for the program. So if it's a rental property, it's the home, the property owner, that actually has to apply for it. Projects must total a thousand dollars or greater, and improvements that require building permits must show proof that building permits and passing its inspections were obtained to receive reimbursement. Qualifying projects include fence repair and/or fence replacement, window replacement, front door replacement, landscape cleanup and/or upgrade, tree trimming, planting, removal, and backfill, irrigation repair and/or replacement, facade updates including siding fascia, trim repair or replacement, and exterior painting, chimney repairs, and then concrete repair for walkways and driveways. The grants will be a reimbursement of of up to fifty percent of actual costs, which will be confirmed by submitted receipts with a maximum grant of ten thousand dollars per property. Each property can only qualify for one grant every twenty-four-month period, and a maximum of two properties per property owner can be awarded a grant in a twelve-month period. And so applications must be received, the proposed plan of work must be approved, and the applicant must receive approval before any work can be started. Um, projects must start within ninety days of approval, and work must be completed within a twelve-month period. Each grant will be signed and approved by the city manager. Um, city council has authorized a hundred thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funds for a trial program or a trial period of this program. Um, at the end of this trial period, we the staff will evaluate all of the criteria to see if anything needs to be changed. And then if it's successful and city council wants to continue the program, staff has included two hundred thousand dollars in the five-year forecast for continuation of the program. So again, just to remind you, the main purpose of this program is to encourage reinvestment into homes to protect the integrity of Capel's neighborhoods. And if you will authorize us to move forward with this program this evening, we'll begin marketing it through all of our traditional communication channels in late March or early April. And then we will also work on a direct mail piece that we we would send to all the homes in Capel that are thirty years or older. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kevin?
Um, thank you for the presentation on this. I I'm very excited about this program. I I think it's something that, uh, our residents need and and something that will benefit our older housing stock. So I'm really excited the Ford Board is bringing this recommendation to us. Um, I did notice on there that, um, it was eligible for owners and renters as well.
So rental properties, so, yes, yes.
Sorry, I said, yes, rental properties.
Yes.
So, um, I had a a thought about this. Um, I I'm not sure how the Ford Board would feel about this, or but I would like the fir- this initial test run, I would like it for be to be just for residents that occupy their homes. Uh, just for me, I think that's really important. I I really wanna get, you know, help those people that are in their homes and stuff. Uh, I'm I'm I think I'm fine expanding that into the future, but just for me, I feel personally that we really need to focus on our our, um, homeowners who occupy their homes, and they're they just need help. Just, you know, uh, I do look at renter, I mean, it is an investment. It is a it is a business, so I'd like to help those people that are in their homes first, give them priority on this test project, and then move on to, because I do wanna make sure that we give the opportunity to all of our housing stock in the future. But that's just a thought that I have about, um, this initial hundred thousand.
So the you're you're proposing to set aside a hundred thousand dollars?
You all approved a hundred thousand of ARPA funds to go to this program already, so that is what we're using for the trial program.
And the maximum amount per house could be ten thousand?
Ten thousand dollars.
So there could be as few as ten homes to benefit from this?
That is correct, for this trial period, yes, sir.
And are you looking at this trial period as as kind of testing the water to see how a permanent program could go?
That that is correct.
I'm still thinking.
Think away, sir.
Jim?
So how many homes in Capel are older than thirty years?
Um, sixty-three point three percent, but, um, the map shows, I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number added up. Um, it's about seventy-five hundred.
Eight thousand, I would.
Yeah, looks like seventy-five hundred. So it's a blue and a green.
Sixty-three percent of fourteen thousand?
Seventy-five.
I can't see it either.
Seventy-five, fifty?
I was thinking seventy-five hundred. I know, well, I'm like, I can think that, say seven, but I can't see for sure.
I I think this is gonna go quickly.
So, okay, thank you, Mayor. All right.
And then Don.
So when I look at this goal number two, uh, in the Vision Two Thousand and Forty Plan, to me, incentives to encourage, uh, you know, the protection of important architectural examples is not what this program is addressing. And when I see it talk about the character of the neighborhoods, to me, that's why I've been so opposed to short-term rentals, for example. I think it tears at the fabric of the the actual character of the area's residential neighborhood. So, you know, I just don't think that this is really an appropriate function of government. You know, I I was fine with the ARPA funds, because it's just the feds giving us our money back to us, and so that's just free money. But, you know, when you look at what we'd be using it for, um, I mean, front door replacement, window replacement, you know, you can drive up and down streets and see windows that have been replaced in multiple homes, front doors that have been replaced in multiple homes, landscape cleanup, um, you know, to the extent that there's someone that's, for whatever reason, can't do that, and they're not in compliance with an ordinance. We have all sorts of benevolence organizations at the different faith institutions in town that will do that for them. You know, concrete repair for walkways and driveways. We've got a dedicated part of our sales tax that that goes to that kind of infrastructure.
These are our private property, not sidewalks.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It would be private, yeah.
Okay, so I just, these are all things that are incidental to homeownership to me, and and I just don't think that we should be taking, you know, taxpayers' dollars for people that are, you know, upkeeping their home and using it. I also think that there's a possible risk that it would actually deteriorate, uh, some of the, what it would work in direct opposition to what we're trying to accomplish, because if someone says, well, you know, I've got eight thousand dollars worth of windows, I'll apply for it, and then they don't make it, they don't get approved. Well, then they don't replace the windows, they apply the next year, then they apply the next year. So now, someone that might have replaced their windows on their own dime is letting it deteriorate for a period of years, waiting for the grant money. And I think it could work at odds to the program. So I just I'm just not in favor of using tax dollars from one set of taxpayers to buy front doors or window replacement for other taxpayers, just because they're applying for the grant. I understand the intent. I understand it's it's a noble intent, it's a wonderful thing to try to do, but I just I I just don't wanna support transferring one taxpayer dollar from from people that are already upkeeping their home to people that just wanna use the the tax dollars to do the same thing when they very likely could afford it. Um, so, you know, I was fine with using the ARPA funds for it, um, you know, and, you know, I I would even suggest that we have some type of, you know, income-level discrimination where maybe people that, you know, in a certain income level in town might have a priority for, you know, improving their homes or some aspect of their homes with the ARPA funds. But, um, you know, I mean, I I don't think someone sitting in a three-million-dollar home or two-and-a-half-million-dollar home should get their door replaced by the taxpayers. So I I would be opposed to this.
But you said you were okay with the ARPA funds being used for this.
Because it's just free money back that we've already paid in income tax to the federal government.
But you're opposed, I'm I'm confused.
I'm opposed to using, once the period, the the trial period's over, to extending it and using Capel taxpayer money to improve the homes of other Capel taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, Don was actually next, and Bijou.
Uh, did after the pilot period, what's the criteria we're looking for to to determine if it's successful or if it needs to be tweaked? I mean, do we have, do we know there are certain things we're looking for to to prove that it's? We ought to forge ahead?
I I think really the thought was whether or not it's being utilized would be the first thing, if it's something that should be continued based on if it's being utilized, and then see if we've run into any issues with any of the things that are qualified for reimbursement right now. I think those are the things we'd be looking for.
Okay, and you said two hundred thousand dollars is what you put in the five-year forecast? Is it two hundred per year or just a two hundred for five years?
It would be two hundred thousand dollars per year until.
Per year, okay.
Until y'all wanted to discontinue the program.
Okay, so that's what you've sort of earmarked, in case we decide to move ahead on it. Uh, I'm I'm in favor of piloting the project and seeing what kind of data we get and what, I mean, how much is being utilized and what effect it has, uh, and then we will have another chance to to discuss, so.
Bijou?
Yeah, so Mindy, you mentioned, uh, this is only qualified for houses thirty years old or plus, right?
Correct.
So if I purchased a house one month ago and the house is thirty years old, I'm eligible to apply?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I'm in favor of doing pilot.
So one of the things I'm I I remember back when we did the first, what was it? Grant for the rental assistance with the the?
Um, yes, sir.
So the first day, we used up almost the entire allotment within the first day. And then we went back and ref and funded again and didn't use any of it. So, you know, it was it was kind of interesting how that worked, so. Um, I think I've got a consensus on on pilot program with further discussion later to come.
Sure, absolutely.
Kevin?
Just, um, I didn't know what everybody thought about prioritizing, you know, homeowners versus, um, rental properties. I'd just like to bring that back up.
For the pilot?
For the pilot.
I'm fine with it.
Oh, yeah, homeowners.
I guess I would've I would've said pilot and see what kind of feedback we get from rental properties also, but I can, I mean, I'm flexible.
I'm okay with it, but the only, as I heard from Mindy, is the owner has to apply.
Right.
Yes, yes, a renter can't apply, the owner of the property.
I'd just be curious, how many how many of those rental properties would be coming forward? Do we see more of those than homeowners? That'd be the only thing I'd be curious about.
And and I'll just tell you, just so you have the background, the reason the discussion has to include the rental properties, if those become blighted, it impacts the neighborhood, and so that's why the discussion from the Ford Task Force was to include both, because improving them improves the overall appearance of the neighborhood.
And I definitely understand that. I would just rather, if we've got this limited funds for a test, I I I wanted to give priority to our residents, right, the the owner-occupied residents.
I'm I'm not sure how everybody stands on Kevin's.
Oh, I'm I'm good with what Kevin is saying.
I'm adamantly against it.
Ah, this guy.
So, Mindy, twenty-nine percent of the properties are renting, right?
Um, um, yes, I believe it was twenty-nine percent was the rental, yeah.
I I'm in favor of what Kevin just said, as far as owner-occupied homes being prioritized.
Thank you.
And I'm I'm fine with that. I think it's.
Yeah, I'm okay. Jim?
So I guess the reason that I was a little confused, perhaps, was because in the memo, it noted that we'd already authorized a hundred thousand dollars from ARPA, right, for the pilot. So I understood that we were actually being asked to 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 give sanction to what was in the five-year plan.
This was just so y'all were giving approval to the the criteria that we just laid out tonight. So the funds were authorized, but we wanted to make sure you were okay with the criteria.
Thank you, Mindy.
Y'all had the vote on that in in August.
Okay, okay, very cool.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's interesting. My thought was that the rental may apply at a higher rate than the homeowners.
They might.
Since since if they view it truly as an investment, then they'll see that as a as an incentive to upkeep.
Use your profits from your business then to.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much. The time is six fifty-three, and we're at the end of work session. We'll convene into regular session of the council at seven thirty.
Wow.
While I say council, step one, we have the timeline.
Good evening, everybody, the time is 7:30 PM, and we're moving into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings, well, we don't have one of those tonight, so the citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list your address. Tonight, we have Reverend Sumesh Jacob with the First United Methodist Church here in Capella to give the invocation, and then we're going to be honored to have members of Troop 848 from the same church recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us, so please stand while Sumesh Jacobs gives our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us spend a moment in silence, remembering the continuing situation of war in Ukraine and the Gaza Strip, the issues of gun violence in our country and those affected by it, and issues of racism and the immigration crisis. Let us pray. O God, you have made us in your own image, and by your Spirit, you work to redeem us through Jesus, your Son. Look with compassion on the whole human family. Take away the arrogance and hatred which infect our hearts. Break down the walls that separate us. Unite us in bonds of love, and work through our struggle and confusion to accomplish your purposes on earth, that in your good time, all nations and races may serve you in harmony around your heavenly throne. So guide the nations of the world in the way of justice and truth, and establish among them that peace which is the fruit of righteousness. You are the source of all wisdom and understanding, and so be present with these who take counsel here in our city's council meeting to continue doing the work of our community. Bless them, that they may consult together for the common good, direct their thoughts and words, concerns and deliberations, that all their decisions may be pleasing to you and be for the welfare of all in this city of Capella. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, ladies. Item number six is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary and/or mayor will cut in and make the request of the city council if they would like to extend the speaker's time. Tonight, we do have three people that have signed up to speak, and the first one is Zeba
Thank you so much for this opportunity to address you, the city council. My name is Zeba Khan, and I am a resident of Irving.
And your address, please.
10412 Morton Court. I'm here today to talk about Palestine, but before that, I actually want to talk about Texas. Texas is the second-largest state in America and the eighth-largest economy. Compared to our sister states, Texas is ranked 16th for fiscal stability, 27th for transportation, and 32nd for healthcare quality. Our children receive the 37th-best education for K through 12. Texas is ranked 42nd for pollution, 47th in healthcare access, and 49th for mass shootings. And in this state of 30 million people, Texas has purchased $185 million of Israeli bombs so that the Israeli government may bomb 2 million Gazan civilians. Gaza is a Texan problem. Families in Texas are going hungry so that families in Gaza may be starved. Families in Texas sleep on the streets so that families in Gaza may be killed on theirs. Veterans in Texas suffer so that soldiers in Israel may be armed. Texas schools last staff, supplies, and safety, while the IDF has leveled 396 educational institutions in Gaza just since October the 7th. I know that you care about this city and then this state, and while Gaza may be far outside of your scope in terms of responsibility, its ethnic cleansing is coming literally at Texas's expense. Regardless on where you stand for Palestine, you are duty-bound to the people of the city and the state, and I hope that freeing our resources from war can bring peace and stability abroad and at home. And I would request you to please sponsor a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I must, I, there are actually four people signed up to speak tonight, not three, I apologize, I cannot count. I, person number two is Faidya Rishig, I think, and I apologize if I mispronounced it. State your name and address, please.
Yes, short in here, I need to make it. So my name is Faidya Rishig, I live in Irving, 4436 Zahira Court. I'm a Palestinian-American, and I'm just coming here also to ask you to sponsor the resolution. I'm here again to remind you and request you to speak out against the ongoing genocide against the Palestinian people. The fact is, this matter of injustice has reached unimaginable scale, that there is no doubt such injustice allowed unchecked will continue to degrade our nation and our communities. As the people of America, we have a duty to stand up for principles of freedoms, peace, and justice in our reputation. If nothing else demands it be done fairly and thoroughly. Standing up for what is right is start right here at home. If all of that is in your power, as is mine, is your voice, then that is what is required of you. I once again call on you to take action and to raise your voice as a community leaders and to take a stand on the right side of history. Please call for ceasefire now, please call for the freedom and justice for the Palestinian that people deserve. My family in Rafah right now, part of them, Adon, I'm watching the news, they may be the news, I ask you, if you have anything in your power to stop the genocide against innocent, to do that, regardless Muslim, Christian, or Jewish, this genocide need to stop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Fariel Tayab.
Good evening, council, thank you for letting me be here, my name is Fariel Tayab, and my address is 5304 Center Hill Drive from Fort Worth, Texas. And I'm sure you're quite wondering why someone from Fort Worth is addressing you tonight. I too am standing here for the people of Gaza and asking your help. I have not come to just one city council, I have been to city councils all over DFW, beseeching you for your attention, because I understand that you didn't ask to be a part of this conversation, you'd made no comment about it before, and yet we are somehow dragging you into it, because you might think, why haven't you just called, talked to your congressman? Mayor Mattie Parker, Fort Worth, said the same thing to me, and to her, I said, "I call every day." She said, "Oh, I will discuss it with Senator Cornyn," I have not heard any response. I have nine emails from Senator Cruz to his credit, all with the same automated message saying that he has not listened to my calls, he has not reeducated himself or reevaluated the situation in any manner. This has changed, it has been over 100 days, and I cannot speak on my own, I have no extra power, I have used all of my civic duties, I have voted, I have spoken to as many politicians as I can get my hands on, and I ask you, please, look in your schedules and find time for us, set aside a time to let us speak to you, one-on-one, in any manner or facility. We don't have time to wait for a month or a, or a few weeks even, wherever we reach out to you, please, take our, take your response seriously and find time for us. We as a community need you, and we are begging you to lend us your ears. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and our next speaker is Samar Taylor.
My name is Samar Taylor, I live at 13900 Gallant Fox Court in Roanoke, Texas. I do not live here, but I too am striving to make a difference, however it's possible, because our people are dying, and you guys have the power to make a difference. I didn't write anything because I didn't plan to speak to you today, but I felt like there wasn't enough people speaking, and so I felt called to stand up here and make a plea to you to consider a ceasefire resolution. We live in Texas, I grew up here, I grew up my whole life in Irving. I am a proud Palestinian-American, and I cannot believe that we are standing behind the genocide of a people. We are so much better than this, and you all have the power to make a difference. We live in Texas where people protect themselves proudly with their guns, and most of us are armed and very empowered to self-protection and believe that that's such an important right, but we're appalled that Palestinians resisted when their rights were taken away, when they've lived under siege for decades, when their food and water is restricted, their electricity is restricted, their movement is restricted, they have no airports. They responded with resistance because of the situation that they've been faced. They don't deserve to be wiped off the face of the earth as a result. Please, use your voices to do what's right, because I know that you all know that this is wrong. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Item number seven are, are, on the agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda's routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, do you have any, is there any comments or desire to pull an item for individual Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E.
Seconded by Councilmember Hinaosa Smith. All in favor?
Walker Hinaosa Smith, Carol Nevels, Jun, no, all in, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you, I should have pointed out that we are short two councilmembers tonight, but we do have a quorum present. That is the end of consent agenda. Item number eight is our city manager report with project updates, future agendas, and directions from work session. Mr. Lan?
Yeah, Mayor, council, thank you. This evening, from the work session, the council gave direction to the Community Development Department to move forward with the $100,000 from the ARP funds to use for the residential rehab with a focus on homes that are owned and not including the rental properties at the present time. So that's the direction we received from council during work session. The South Belt Line, there is going to come a day in the next few months that I will not have to talk about South Belt Line for a while. The contractor continues to work on the subgrade paving and traffic signals between Hackberry and 635, the target is still by April to be complete and have the road open. Dart currently is working on the Freeport Parkway Crossing, as many of you know, that's probably one of the roughest crossings we have in town, so they're finally getting to it. They will be closing more road to install the tracks from February 23rd to the 26th. The thing, the building we call the Hangar, the former Fire Administration building at 500 Southwestern, demolition and remodel is underway. And Woodhurst, the contractor is continuing to install utilities. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, it's good to hear about Belt Line, because I've been promising that to a number of people. Item number nine is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Wanted to highlight that we have the Commodores coming to the Capella Arts Center on Saturday, April 13th. Tickets are now on sale online, and visit capellaartscenter.org to purchase tickets while they're still available. And for the upcoming May 4th election, the filing period ends this Friday, February 16th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Visit the, our election webpage for more information. And on another note, this past week, in the last 10 days, we've had so many different community events that were so fabulous and celebrating the community. For example, a week, a week ago, the Capella Chamber of Commerce had their annual gala, which was very well-attended and was just a great, it was a lot of fun. Then on Tuesday, we had our community summit that brought together volunteer agencies from all over the city. And this past Saturday, the Capella Lions Club kicked off Saturday morning with their annual pancake breakfast and fundraiser. Then at noon, the Baha'i Community Leadership Awards were given out, including two to the City of Capella employees, Fireman James Daly and Police Officer Kelly Luther, so congratulations to those two. And then we concluded Saturday night with the, the Arts Foundation Gala at the Performing Arts Center. So there's been just a ton of events that have been celebrating Capella and life in Capella, and our, our future is looking just great. So item number 10 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I believe Councilmember Nevels has an item.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly extend a thank you to Superintendent Brad Hunt for inviting the city council along with the school board and his business advisory group to take a tour of Capella High School today. We were able to get a tour of their career and technical education program that they have, and we saw a ton of great things. Led off with a presentation from several of the students that participate in that program, kind of hear their story and, and how the program has positively affected them and their trajectory, and then we moved on to a tour, which was just absolutely fantastic. So, just wanted to thank Superintendent Brad Hunt again. I know Councilmember Hinaosa Smith and Councilmember Matthew were there as well, and we had a great time, so just wanted to say continue, or thank you, and we enjoy our continued collaboration with the school district, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number 11, there was no necessary action from executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 7:48 PM.